Then we're going to get started. Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of Northampton Township Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, called a order. Before we skip to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to make a quick comment about making public comments. If you would like to make a comment, please email your request to publiccomment@nhtwp.org. That's nhtwp.org. There are, there will be three opportunities for public comment tonight. We'll have public comment limited to agenda items only. There'll be one public hearing where there will be public comment, but only for that public hearing. And then open public comment at the end. If you'd like to comment during the agenda items, please put the agenda item in the subject line of your email request and your name and address in the body so that you can be recognized. We'll only take emails that have a name and address in them so that we can see that they're legitimate emails. And then you can also put in, if you would like to speak a public comment at the end, and I'll ask for anybody that wants to have public comment during the public hearing. Okay, with that, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic. Which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty. Liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, thank you. We have no flag presentations or special presentations tonight. So I will open up for public comment. For agenda items only, don't know if we have any. Last chance. Bill, are you still on? Did you see any public comment either?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to consent items. Approve all minutes, Frank? You're on mute, Frank. There you go.
If there are no objections, I request that the minutes of the October 28th, 2020, and the minutes of the November 10th, 2020, be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Okay, approved by consent, thank you. Move on to accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, the bill's list for November 4th, 2020, $640,053. And then I have the bills list for November 18th, 2020,
Any objections? If not, approved by unanimous consent? Okay, thank you, no objections heard. Move on, we have a public hearing tonight to consider an ordinance reducing the speed limit on New Road from Second Street Pike to Hapo Road from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Like to open the public hearing? Frank, if you wouldn't mind introducing?
The township administration has been receiving complaints about speeding on the section of New Road from Second Street Pike to Hapo Road. That road section has a school, new homes being built near the intersection with Second Street Pike, and a development of the trailhead from New Road to the township park. Based on these issues, the administration has recommended that the speed limit along that section of New Road be reduced from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Well, the Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code allows municipalities to establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit on any local road in a residential area, and ordinance is required so that the speed limit is enforceable by the police department. During tonight's hearing, the board will be considering a proposed ordinance that will amend Chapter 15 of the Township Code of Ordinances to establish the 25 mile an hour speed limit on New Road. The ordinance was advertised in the Bucks Carrier Times on November 2nd, 2020. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt the ordinance number 608, amending the Township Code at Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles and Traffic to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on New Road from Second Street Pike to Hapo Road.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Frank, anything further?
Nothing further.
Kim?
No, I think that in a residential area, 25 miles per hour is totally appropriate.
Thanks, Kim. Eileen? No comments? Barry?
No, the only thing I'll mention is that this was the only road that was actually 35 miles per hour along the entire length of Second Street Pike. So I'm glad that we're taking action here. That's good.
Very good. No comment for me. I will ask, is there anybody from the public that'd like to make a comment? You can put your hand up or maybe email in. Okay, I don't see any. No public comment, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Next, we'll move on to some new business. And first up is consideration of a preliminary final plan development for Richborough Elementary. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. May I ask, is the applicant here from the school district or?
Hold on, Bill, Doug Taylor here or? They are, let me promote them the panelists.
Sure. Maybe what we could do is, once they get on, put on the panel, if they could briefly introduce themselves, I appreciate that. And then I can give an overview of what we're doing. Hey, lock guards now?
I believe they're all coming on board now.
Okay, good.
And the YouTube live is up and functioning.
Thank you, Bill. Okay.
It's Mike Carr here on behalf of the district, and we've got Terry DeGroot, Doug Taylor, Colin Case, all who seem to be joining, and Dave Schrader, our architect.
Okay, for the porch benefit, we have, thank you, Mike. We have two items discussed tonight. The first item pertaining to the school district is Richborough Elementary School, which is located at 125 Upper Holland Road in the Council Rock School District. And they're proposing to construct a 2,685 foot square foot building addition for mechanical equipment at the site. And also another 986 square foot improvement to the building entrance. There's a couple of items that we should discuss tonight pertaining to this. One of which is, and maybe, Bill, if you could put the plan up, I appreciate it, can you put the site plan up? While Bill's doing that, I'll just mention a couple of things that we should talk about tonight. One is that the school is located in the Village Overlay Village Overlay District. So as you're aware, we should have certain designs requirements pertaining to the township. With the past school district projects, the township has actually waived their parking recreational fee, the impact fee. As a result, the fee here would be $6,081 if we propose to waive that. And also in past practices, we, as opposed to charging the full fee for the building improvements, we've done 70% of the required permit fees as a discount to the school district. The last point we should talk about is that the sidewalk in front of the building, there was some discussion about whether we should make some improvements to that and make it ADA compliant. But maybe if I could leave it to Mike or whoever you'd like on your team there to explain what are you proposing and the reasoning for the addition for the mechanical structure?
Sure.
We gotta get, we gotta get the Richborough plan up here.
Okay, so this is obviously, yeah, there you go.
There you go.
I was gonna say, boy, they really made some improvements at school.
Doug, if you wouldn't mind, would you just briefly, like, give the board a sense as to why we're doing what we're proposing?
Yeah, sure. Both of these facilities, Hillcrest and Richborough, and now, right now, Richborough, were constructed in the 1980s. The infrastructure of these facilities is growing tired. The primary purpose for these projects is not so much a major renovation that you saw at the Holland Middle School or the Rolling Hills Elementary School, although there are some facade improvements that we're trying to implement. But the key is to replace the infrastructure, new HVAC systems, air condition these buildings that aren't air conditioned. Get new HVAC systems that are prepared to address some of these pandemic issues that we're encountering today with increased MIR filtration, some UV filtration in the systems as well. And to replace the electrical system, life safety, and all those other things. So we really are working within the footprint of the building. We're respecting the partitions within the building. We're improving the entrance, the secure entry vestibule, and we're increasing the mechanical space to facilitate the new equipment that we need to support it. And the, the projects are also phased so that we can relocate these students of these respective buildings to the former Richborough Middle School and take advantage of of that space that we have, minimize the construction from two years to one, and save the taxpayers significant money by avoiding the use of modular classrooms on these projects as temporary space.
And I got ahead of myself. Can, in case any members of the public don't know who you are, can you tell us what your role is with the district?
Sure. I am Doug Taylor. I'm the Director of Operations for Council Rock, and I manage the, the facilities, the grounds, and whatnot.
Thank you. Terry DeGroot. Please tell us how you're involved with this project.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Terry DeGroot. I'm with Terraform Engineering. And we're working on this project as a civil engineer, and I'm in the responsible charge of all that work. We've been before this board several times with Council Rock projects.
And what has been your interaction with the township thus far on this job?
We've submitted plans, actually made us two plan submissions, got review comments from the township staff and consultants. And we are in the process of addressing the comments on the second review letter now. And probably submitting that to the township next week. We believe we have most of those details addressed, and we do agree to comply with all comments in all of the review letters that we received.
We've been before the zoning hearing board. Keep yourself unmuted, Terry. I'm gonna deal with you for a little bit. What, what did we need from the zoning hearing board?
We got relief from the zoning hearing board for impervious coverage and signage issues. We have a sign on the facade of the building that says Richborough, most appropriately, and we have three directional signs, one at each eastern driveway and western driveway, and another one interior to the site. These signs are almost identical to those signs you see at Holland Middle School, if you're familiar with that property.
If I understand correctly, we have review letters from Gilmore, McMahon, Pinoni, and NBCMA. Can we dispense with any of those letters by saying we'll comply to everything that's contained within them?
Yes, Michael, what I'd like to do, if I could, I just want to give you an opportunity, which you've done very nicely, is give a presentation of the overview. You know, for the public's benefit, you've been to the planning commission, you've been to the zoning hearing board, you've also gotten comments from various township engineers, things like that. What I would like to do is maybe just summarize some of the key points. Now, you know, I want to certainly note that, you know, as a resident of the township for more than 25 years, and having all four of my children go through Council Rock School District, we're very proud of the school district. I thank the you folks, the administration, the students, the teachers. Just an outstanding program that's offered to our children, so we certainly thank you for that. The township always takes a position that we want to work as well as possible with the school district. And I think in the spirit of that, what I like to do is I like to propose a motion that we would, you know, agree to a reduction in the permit fees and only charge 70% for the permit fees, and also waive the requirement for the parking recreation fee. The only thing I would like to comment on is that the sidewalk in front of the building, and maybe you could show that, Bill. The sidewalk in front of the building, we would like to have that become ADA compliant. And right now, we, you know, you know, as part of the Village Overlay District, you know, there's certain requirements to make it, you know, aesthetically pleasing and putting bricks, things like that. We're not seeking that, but we are seeking that the sidewalk be made ADA compliant and make improvements from that for the entire front edge of the building. So part of the motion I'd like to make tonight would be including that. So I mean, I could just add, maybe I could make the motion, we can have a second and then have more discussion on it.
Yes, please do.
Okay, thanks. So I move for approval of the Richborough Elementary Preliminary Final Land Development Plan Number SLD 20-4, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates Review Letter dated October 23rd, 2020, the Pinoni Associates Review Letter dated August 19th, 2020, and the McCann Associates Review Letter dated October 22nd, 2020. Is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is also subject to the following conditions. I'd like to just go through six conditions if I could. First condition is that the requirement for parking recreation impact fee be waived. And as I mentioned before, that fee is approximately $6,081. We also will be subject to a payment of 70% of the permit fee. So the township will be given a 30% discount to the school district. As with all developments, it requires the approval from the municipal authority. The school districts are also under a land development agreement asked prepared by the township solicitor to guarantee the installation of public improvements. And those improvements should include the construction of ADA compliant sidewalk in front with street lighting. And we're not asking for the decorative bricklay, but it should be ADA compliant and have street lighting. Number five is that the final architectural design shall be subject to approval by the township in accordance with the Village Overlay District requirements. And number six, approval from any outside agency having jurisdiction shall be required, including but not limited to PennDOT and the Conservation District.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Board discussion. Barry, anything further?
No, I think that's it. I think it's, I think the addition is, we're very pleased that the school, all the schools have been maintained. But I think the sidewalk in front, I think it's important that it is ADA compliant and that at this time that we make proper improvements to that. We're also concerned about having adequate lighting there, so when people walk along the sidewalk, it's safe at night.
Eileen?
The only thing that I would like to, to add is, well, really ask a question, is when are you proposing to begin construction on Richborough? Mr. Carr?
That's a question for Doug, I think.
Okay, Doug, Mr. Taylor?
Hi, I'm Miss Silver. So the project schedule, if I could just skip where the Hillcrest Elementary School would be planned first. So that would be the summer of '21 through the beginning of the summer of '22. And then we would begin the Richborough project summer of '22 and complete the summer of '23.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure. And just to clarify, there is a chance we would award both these projects at the same time in that we're proposing a potential value-added alternate to bid both projects together and to see if the contractors would provide any discount if they were awarded both projects at the same time, knowing that one would start a year after the Hillcrest project. So the approvals are important for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Eileen. Kim?
I like all the improvements being made for Richborough Elementary. I have a softness in my heart for it since my son went through Richborough Elementary. But I do agree about the sidewalks and the lighting.
Okay, thanks. Frank?
No comments.
And nothing special for me. I do agree, I do like the change in the motion to do the sidewalks and the lighting as well. Mr. Carr, or anybody else have any other questions or comments before we move on?
No, that was exceptionally efficient. I appreciate the manner in which you operate.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one other thing that I didn't share initially, and that both of these projects are planned to be LEED Gold certified projects. Successful in getting the ACE grant again, not for the full $2 million, but $820,000 per project to offset the cost to the community. So those are good things that should be mentioned.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. You want to move right on to the next one, Barry?
Yeah, if I could please, yes. So the next one is the Hillcrest Elementary School Preliminary Final Plan of Land Development, SLD 20-3. I have to note, I do live in Holland now, so I go by the middle school all the time now. Just highly impressed how that school came out. Very nice. And, and we, the township certainly appreciates the sidewalk that was extended from the school all the way to Buck Road and may, making improvements to the crosswalk there. So I think that was very beneficial. And we have the Waverly subdivision coming online now on East Holland Road, so those sidewalks connect there. So we certainly appreciate that. There was discussion about the, you know, does any changes with sidewalks with Hillcrest Elementary School? But I think, my understanding, most of the review boards, the planning commissions, zoning hearing board, and others felt that there was adequate sidewalks here, so we would not make any additional requirements at this time. The only thing we did mention is that, you know, we would be consistent in the sense that in the past, we've waived the impact fee for parking wreck. And I think the board would be willing to do that, and I make a proposal on that. And also, in the spirit of cooperation, we would also lower fees to 70% of the permit fees. You know, as a further discount to the school district, showing the cooperation between the two organizations. So I don't know, Mike, or any, you or anybody else would like to maybe briefly explain what you're trying to do at this, this site?
Doug, why don't you describe what we're attempting to do here?
Sure. Because both these buildings are the same exact footprint, the scope is exactly the same as we're proposing for Richborough. It again is an infrastructure replacement, the addition to the secure entry in the front, slight enlargement of the office area, and the addition of the mechanical space to facilitate the boiler plant that the project will need for the new equipment. The partitions remain generally where they are within the building, and it's a, you know, more of a renovation within those spaces. And some minimal site work, the conversion of the existing playground off the side of the school to a looping drive with parking, which would allow us to increase the stacking if down the road we needed to do so, but does provide some additional parking for the staff at this building.
And Terry? Describe the interaction with the township and the, and the relief that was granted by the zoning hearing board, if you would.
Sure. Very similar to Richborough. We made two submissions. We're working on addressing the second set of comments. We are willing to comply with all of the comments, and we're, like I said, we're working on doing that now. We also made a trip to the zoning hearing board on November 9th. With this project for directional signage. We're gonna have a directional sign at the entrance to the west, the combined entrance between Holland Middle School and Hillcrest. And then one additional directional sign on site, as well as signage on the front of the building with the CR logo and the Hillcrest name across the front. You can see that in the rendering here, second one down. There's the Hillcrest logo. And if you look at the top rendering on the right, you'll see the CR symbol, very similar, a little smaller in scale, but very similar to what's at Holland.
And are, do we need to summarize the waiver requests that we're asking for here?
I think, Michael, I think we, every, all board members have a copy of that, so it's probably not necessary, unless just one particularly.
I appreciate the manner in which you've moved through the last one, right?
Yeah, good, a comment, a question I did have, Michael, or I know when Holland Middle School was proposed, there was projections on student enrollment, things like that. Maybe just give the board and the residents a brief update where the Holland Middle School is with occupancy rates, things like that?
That'd be for Doug.
That'll be Doug, okay.
Yeah, Barry, I'm sorry, I'm not really prepared to have the numbers for that. I can certainly get back to you on Holland Middle School, but yeah, I apologize, I wasn't, I wasn't ready for that.
That's fine, Doug. The only reason I ask is that I know when we did the resigned work, which obviously you're part of, there was some concern about the amount of traffic, and I don't see that in the morning as much. So, you know, I think everything seems to be working.
I guess it's fair to say that, seeing as we're not adding classrooms, we're not changing the student population dramatically in a way that requires major building renovations, that I don't think there's an impact that we anticipate.
No, I don't think so. So, Adam, if I could maybe proceed, I'll give a motion.
Please do.
Okay, I move for approval of the Hillcrest Elementary School Preliminary Final Plan Development, SLD 20-3, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates Review Letter dated October 20th, 2020, the Pinoni Associates Review Letter dated July 15th, 2020, and then McMahon Associates Review Letter dated October 22nd, 2020. Is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. Approval is also subject to the following conditions, so I'll just read those. First condition is that the requirement for the parking recreational impact fee has been waived. The second condition is that the payment of 70% of the permit fee is required, so the township's willing to waive 30% of that. Also, it'd be the approval from the municipal authority, which is required. The fourth item would be the school district shall enter into a land development agreement asked prepared by the township solicitor to guarantee the installation of public improvements. And the last item, number five, is approval from any outside agency having jurisdiction shall be required, including but not limited to PennDOT and the Conservation District.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Barry, anything else?
No, that's pretty much it.
Frank?
Nothing.
Eileen?
I just, maybe I missed it. Doug, you did say that we're having new HVAC in Hillcrest as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I thought you said, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you. That's all.
So Doug, both schools did not have air conditioning before, now they will both have air conditioning?
That is correct.
Yes, I mean, that's a huge advantage, I think, for the children and the teachers too.
And I also think it's a huge advantage that we're getting it now while we're through a pandemic and they're getting all the hardware needed to help the children and the staff and so forth to have clean air during this time of the pandemic. It'll be very nice.
Agreed, thank you.
Kim, any comment? None for me, other than in the spirit of friendly competition, Kim, my kids went to Hillcrest. So, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was very pleasant.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just take a minute to clear the deck and then we'll move on. While I'm waiting, just remember, if you'd like to make public comment, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. Put your name and address in the body and we'll recognize you at the end of the meeting for your public comment. Next on the agenda is a presentation of our 2021 preliminary budget, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Pellegrino, our township manager.
Thank you. Let me just the presentation up. Come on, there we go. All right, I am going to talk about the budget tonight, and I recognize that I'm the only thing standing between us and the end of the meeting, so I'll try to be crisp. All right, I'm gonna talk about three things tonight. I want to give you a broad overview of the budget, sort of a summary of what, what the numbers look like, and a few of the capital projects that are still on the, on the, in the budget and proposed for next year. I want to talk about real estate taxes, and I want to talk about some impacts that I see for the future on the budget. So we're gonna start with the summary here. There is no tax or refuse fee increase in the budget. All of our existing services will be maintained. There's no reduction in services. We're gonna continue our road maintenance program as we have done in the last couple of years, paving and micro-surfacing 10 miles. As I mentioned, there is some infrastructure investment. As I mentioned, there is some infrastructure investment that's proposed, and there are no personnel reductions. Think I can probably stop there. This is a general summary of our budget. We have a $37.6 million proposal for operations, $3.8 million in capital, and $1.9 million in, for our pension funds, a total budget of $43.3 million. To show you the comparison with last year, this slide will show you that our operations increase is about 2%. You can see the reduction in capital there of 45%, and our pension funds are up 13%, about $200,000 over the 1.7 million. Again, that is a requirement of the pension plans that we fund, the unfunded liability and future costs. That number does vary. It's not always that much. Sometimes it's even less. But our overall, our budget is about $2 million less than we had appropriated in 2020. Now, as far as capital is concerned, and I know I've mentioned this to each of you individually, we are really cutting back on capital next year, and I'll tell you in a few minutes why. But we're only doing absolutely necessary projects that are grant-related, where we, we have a percentage share, 20 or 30% of the total project cost, and the projects otherwise are paid for by state funds and/or federal funds. All right, this pie chart shows you how our revenues are generated by fund. So you can see that the general fund is the largest piece of the pie. That is where our police, our public works department, our zoning and code enforcement, the administration and finance, and anything administrative is paid from, or revenue comes in from, for. You can see that that's almost 40% of the, of the total budget. This chart shows you appropriations, and you can see here that revenue in the general fund just about covers what we appropriate in the general fund with a little bit of a shortfall. Refuse collection fund sort of stands on its own. We call that an enterprise fund because it's fee-based. Residents pay a fee for their trash service. That fee is set to cover all the costs of the program, and that fee is adjusted as costs change. You can see the other funds appropriated as percentages of the total budget. Highway aid includes money that was allocated from the, or for, I should say, additional road paving. And that was set by a half mil tax that was levied last year for road paving, and that has helped us to achieve our 10-mile goal. Couple different ways to look at the budget. This chart shows you how our, how much our services cost. You can see that between police, public works, trash collection, fire and rescue, it's about 63% of the total budget. Debt service is another seven and a half, and you can see that Parks and Recreation, Library, and Senior Center, and the country club that we like to call community services are about 20% of the total budget. And of course, down the bottom, administration, code enforcement, about 7%. The interfund transfer, that is, that is an amount of money that is transferred from the general fund to our capital appropriation budget, and that changes also from, from year to year. Couple different ways to look at it. This is a chart that shows you, if you add it up, that employee benefits, wages, and pension costs are more than half of our budget, I think about 53%. And you can see that debt is still about 7%. We're still spending about 14% of our total on capital, and a refuse is 10%. Operating expenses are everything else that doesn't fit into one of those other categories. All right, I mentioned a few infrastructure projects. These are the projects that are included in the proposed budget. The Township Road Extension and Roundabout Project, we are almost finished with the design. In order to get a PennDOT permit for construction, we need to acquire either temporary construction easements or permanent easements for utilities such as wires for streetlights. There are 12 property owners that we've contacted. I think there's 12, and we are getting some, we're getting cooperation for that. There are, so this year coming up, we should complete the design, and we should be in a position to get a PennDOT permit for this project. You all know that we have a grant application into the Department of Community and Economic Development. We've asked them for $3 million. I don't know if we'll get $3 million, but as our traffic engineers explained to me, what typically happens with projects like this is that you, you can accumulate grant funds, sometimes with a match and sometimes not. The application that we submitted recently does not have a matching requirement, but you can accumulate matching, you can accumulate grant funds when, to a point where you have enough money to construct the project. Buck Road Streetscape Improvements Project, that again is, we will see completion of the preliminary engineering. They were just, we probably are 95% complete with it. Our share of this improvement project, which is estimated at $9 million, was $450,000, and that paid for the preliminary engineering. We have a little bit more to go. Once that is finished, on our side, PennDOT picks up the project, they finish the engineering, what they call final engineering, they will put the project out to bid, and they will pay for all of the construction. Left Turn Lane on Holland Road at East Holland. This is a project that stemmed from the construction of the middle school, and the school district did give us $20,000 toward this project. We believe it's going to cost about $100,000 to finish, and this is installing a left lane, left turn lane on Holland Road at East Holland Road. And if you know that intersection, sort of coming over the crest of a hill and down the hill, it is an improvement that we believe is necessary. We were able to acquire easements from several of the property owners. One is a permanent easement. There are several temporary construction easements. Even the residents who live around that intersection recognized that this would be an important project, and they were very cooperative. The Richborough Sidewalk Project is a project that we did receive a grant for. We have $500,000. This project would complete sections of sidewalk or improve sections of sidewalk along Second Street Pike from about Holmes House Road down to Crossroads Plaza Drive. Here again, design is complete. We are acquiring temporary construction easements, and in some cases, permanent easements for, again, utilities. We expect to put this project out to bid next year, and our share of this project cost, of the grant cost, would be the engineering services that we provided in doing the design. So all of the construction we expect will be paid for by the grant that we received from PennDOT. Ironworks Creek Sidewalk Project is a project to improve sidewalks between Tenured Road and Crossroads Plaza Drive. We call this Phase 2, but we really identified it as a separate project because we, we have a separate grant of $890,000. Now, you'd think that's a lot of money for that small area, but there is a creek crossing and some complex engineering that had to go into the project in order to complete the sidewalk connections. We have two easements to, to acquire here. One we have secured, the other we are still working on. We also expect to put this project out to bid next year. Here again, our share of the project cost was completing the preliminary engineering. That was $160,000, and PennDOT will be paying for the entire cost of the construction once we put that out to bid, including the construction inspection. And again, I'll say it again, we're paving or micro-surfacing 10 miles of our 180-mile road system next year. And that, I think we are on a path to continue to do that. We did have, as I mentioned to each of you, we expect to receive about $100,000 less in liquid fuels funds because people aren't driving, and liquid fuels funds come from the gas tax. We hope that changes for 2022, but we'll have to keep our fingers crossed and see. We are able to maintain the 10 miles for 2021. I'm hoping we can do the same. If that $100,000 comebacks, comes back, I don't think we'll have any problem doing that. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about taxes. Our total tax rate is 18.511 mils. This is how it breaks down. Six mils for admin, police, zoning, and public works. All of that is in the general fund. Fire and emergency medical services includes our fire company support and support from, to our rescue squad. The separate taxes we have are for libraries, parks and recreation, half a mil for road maintenance, and I mentioned this earlier, that's a separate levy just for road paving, and that has been a very big help in allowing us to achieve our goal of 10 miles. We have a separate levy for public works equipment. This has allowed us to keep our fleet and our construction equipment and everything that public works uses to keep our infrastructure in good condition, to keep that, that equipment in good condition and operable. And we have a, we have a road, an equipment replacement program in place that is funded by the revenue from this, this separate levy. And then we have about four and a half mils dedicated to debt service. All right, this is a really interesting chart. This is an assessment history going back to 2010, and I thought I would, Bob Armeland and I are always playing around with numbers, and I thought I would share this information with you because I don't know if anyone knows this, even though it's been in the budget for a while. You see our assessment in 2010 was $598 million, and we had a tax levy of 11.1425 mils. What you should notice here is that in, by 2013, our assessment had dropped by $18 million. And that equates to a loss of tax revenue. It started in 2011. It was caused by the 2008 crash and the resultant drop in real estate values, reassessments by folks who thought their properties were assessed at a higher rate than they should have been. And when you do the math, you see that the reduction in real estate tax value from 2010 to 2021, where we're still not back to where we were in 2010, is about $2.2 million. That's revenue, tax revenue that we did not receive during this last 10-year period that if we had maintained the assessed valuation of $598 million, we, we would have had additional tax revenue over the last 10 years. Now, the next chart takes that lost tax revenue and compares it to the millage increase we've had since 2010. Now, you're looking at 7.37 mils over 11 years because we're not having a tax increase next year. The mill value of the lost taxes is 3.82 mils. So the increase, if we didn't have a reduction in the assessed value, would be about three and a half mils. The 7.37 mils equates to about .67 mils a year on average. So I thought this was an interesting analysis because it shows the impact of a reduction in assessed value that not many people think about, except us in the local government world. And it does have an impact on the tax levies that we need to pass going forward. So this chart shows you that in 2010, from 2010 to 2013, we had a flat tax of 11.1425, but you can see that our assessed value dropped from 598 to 584, down to 580 in 2013. And when it got to 580 in 2013, that's when we needed to, to increase taxes, and we did. So we went four years, we had a tax increase, then we went another four years, and we had a tax increase. Now, the assessments started to come back, but it was coming back very slowly. And then in 2017, we had another tax increase for, for 2018, I guess, 2017 into 2018. And then we went two years without an increase, and then we had an increase last year. Now, last year's increase, I'll remind you, was to fund a growing fire service that we needed to fund, to fund police costs. We had an increase to pave roads and for our emergency medical services. So that was a very, that was, I think, was all good worthwhile things. But this chart shows you that the assessed value of the community definitely has an impact on the, the tax rates that we, we sometimes have to levy. So right now, our median home assessment is $37,000. By the way, this is up about $1,500 from the last time I, I showed you this slide. So on average, on the median, I should say, is about $685 per year for a home assessed at the median in the township. I think that is a pretty good bargain, since I think we have amazing services here, and our, our staff provides that excellent service all year long. This is how the taxes break out when you look at the school district, the county, and the township altogether. The school district makes up 75% of our total town, total tax bill. The county is another 14%, and the township is about 11%. It's actually 10.6 to be exact, but I rounded it up for purposes of the chart. It's actually ten point six to be exact, but I rounded it up for purposes of the chart. I happen to love the dollar bill. One thing we couldn't do, and we tried to today, was put a mask on George Washington. But we couldn't figure out how to do that this afternoon, so he's unmasked for this meeting. Going into the future, I think there's three things we need to talk about. Fire services, trash services, and our fund balance. Let me talk about fire services first. You all remember this report. This is SR six. It's done several years ago by the Pennsylvania Senate, commissioned by them. And what it showed was a significant drop in volunteer service. We all know that. Our first responder volunteers are diminishing. People are getting older. We don't have that influx of young people coming into the volunteer service. When I talk about this, I'm talking about fire services and emergency medical services, both of those services. So you can see the numbers, three hundred thousand volunteers in the seventies versus thirty-seven thousand today. This is a quote from the from the report. And it basically says that the recruitment of personnel and retention of personnel is a problem and will result in the expansion of paid staffing and related tax increases to the Commonwealth, to the population. You all know that. We experienced this last year when we had that tax increase to support the fire company and our and the expansion of our paid staff. So, in our case, we had a bargain for a hundred years. We had volunteers who responded, who trained, who provided community service at very little or no cost. And they are the true heroes. They were there when the fire started, when the fire needed to be put out, when there was an emergency call. They were there for it. I think this township was on the cutting edge in two thousand and eight. When we started a paid firefighter program, we hired four people out of the Richborough Station. We needed four in order to, the minimum number to ride on an engine. And we, for the longest time, those four people provided daytime service Monday through Friday. I can tell you that in the first year, our daytime response was cut by fifty percent. That's a big number. Responding to additional pressure, in two thousand and nineteen, we implemented an on-call program. This was a small stipend paid to volunteers who would agree to be on call overnight or on weekends so that when there was a an incident, we could assure that they were adequate responders to ride the fire truck or whatever, get out to a call and address whatever issue was was called in. Most recently, you know, we retained another grant. And I didn't mention, but the first round of hiring for paid firefighters, we received a half-million-dollar grant. It was paid out in declining amounts over four years. And when that grant expired, the township picked up the full cost. We did obtain another grant for close to nine hundred thousand dollars this time. And we hired an additional five paid firefighters. They started work this year, and they are now working twelve-hour shifts seven days a week. So now we have a guarantee that we're going to have responders seven days a week, twelve hours a day. So we are operating now as a true combination department. Well, what is that? A combination department is is a fire department that consists of paid firefighters and volunteers. And to the average person, you wouldn't know the difference. A true combination department has a single command structure with a chief and a deputy chief and the battalion chiefs and the lieutenants and the firefighters, standing next to each other, could either be paid or volunteer. And again, you would not know the difference. This is the future of the fire service. We expect to have a combination department for some time. But I do think, in a ten-year timeframe, we are going to see a need for more paid career staff. You all know too that we are embarking on two major construction projects to replace Station Three and Station Seventy-three, Station Three in Richborough, Station Seventy-three in Holland. These fire stations were built in the sixties. They lack adequate facilities for men and women, bunk rooms, and the like. We hope to change that with these new stations that would provide not only separate facilities but also safety measures that are included in modern fire stations. We propose to fund this through a bond issue. While we haven't nailed down the exact cost yet, we think it's going to be somewhere. The bond issue would need to be between twenty-four and twenty-seven million dollars. Again, that is a moving target right now. These numbers are very preliminary. But I wanted to give you some idea of the kinds of dollars we are talking about. And we think that Station Three will be about the size of the police station, about twenty-six thousand square feet. Station Seventy-three will be a little bit smaller, maybe nineteen or twenty thousand square feet. We are in design, as I mentioned, but we are very early in the design process and at the concept plan phase. So as time goes on, in probably the by the end of the year or early into next year, we will have nailed down the design. And we will also have a more firm budget from which to work. A little bit about trash service. You all know that we participate in SWIP SWAC, the Southwest Bucks Solid Waste Advisory Committee. There are four contracts that we manage. Refuge, recycling and yard waste collection, refuse disposal, yard waste disposal and recycling material disposal. These are all separate contracts. And SWIP SWAC has been doing this since the late eighties. I think the advantage to having separate contracts is we better manage the cost. So our fee, our fee for service this year is two hundred and ninety-nine dollars for yard waste, refuse and recycling collection and disposal. Now, three of these contracts expire at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. The collection contract with JP Mascaro, the yard and the yard waste disposal and recycling recycling material disposal contracts with waste management. Refuge disposal is a contract we have with Wheel Abrater, which is the incinerator in Falls Township. Now, I am more than aware that we have had our share of collection problems this year. We know every day we receive calls from residents who report that either their trash collection was missed or their whole street was missed, or you know, it's been out there for a while and they haven't gotten to it. We are well aware of that. We are working with JP Mascaro on the collection problem. I'm not going to make excuses for Mascaro. They have had some issues related to COVID with their employees. And when you put new people on the trucks, new drivers, new, you guys on the back that are picking up the cans and dumping the waste in the back of the truck. If they're not familiar with the community, things do get messed up, and that's what's happening here. I think I would, I think probably by the end of the year, we will see an improvement in the service, but we're going to limp along for a while. I can tell you that township staff are doing everything they can to make sure that Mascaro gets back to pick up material that is left at the curb. And sometimes it takes a little longer than than others. But I would ask our residents to be patient with us. There are significant downsides to to terminating the contract at this time. So we hope we can get through this together, and I think we will. We just need to be patient. I wanted to show you this slide, which shows you now today that our trash collection services are forty-one dollars less than they were eleven years ago, ten years ago. I think this is a pretty remarkable slide because you and I both know that everything seems to go up. But we've managed these contracts fairly well. We've had some luck. We went five years from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen without an increase. And we had an increase last year. We will probably need a small increase in two thousand and twenty-two, but for next year, we are holding the line. But I do think this does demonstrate that we have done our best to minimize costs to our residents. I want to talk a little bit about fund balance. This is important. Our general fund, fund balance going into two thousand and twenty-two is projected at less than six hundred thousand dollars. That is very low. The orange line on this chart shows you what a fund balance should be. And fund balance, appropriate fund balance is anywhere from twelve to fifteen percent of proposed expenditures or appropriations for the year. So the line you see that is orange here shows what the what the preferred fund balance or the suggested fund balance by the Government Finance Officers Association is based on our particular appropriations. This line happens to represent fifteen percent. It could be twelve percent. It could be eleven percent. Personally, I would be happy with ten percent. But you can see, from two thousand and nine to today, that there were two times when we had adequate fund balance in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and thirteen. And we were actually pretty good up through two thousand and seventeen. And then our fund balance started to drop. Now, we use fund balance for a lot of things. We use it to, we use it for cash flow. We use it for covering appropriations that aren't covered by revenue, which is a significant use of the fund balance. And again, as I said, cash flow. But we also use it for emergencies. COVID is a good example. We have these electronic switches, and if I don't move, the light goes out. So we use it for emergencies, and fortunately, we didn't have a large expense for COVID. We spent about eighty thousand dollars. But that's money that isn't budgeted, and that would come out of, for example, fund balance. So I'm not suggesting we do anything right now. But I do think we should work on developing a plan to maintain an adequate fund balance. Those lines should be close together and following the same trajectory. So this is just the general fund. I'm going to show you the next slide, which puts all of our operating funds, all other operating funds together. This would be parks and recreation, debt, liquid fuels, all of those other tax funds, fire fund, rescue squad fund. You can see here that we did a pretty good job in these funds now of keeping the fund balance at a pretty good level from two thousand and nine to actually last year. And then it dropped. Okay, well, why did it drop all of a sudden so rapidly? COVID hit and twenty twenty was a bust, particularly in our country club fund and in our parks and recreation fund. Those two funds are account for all the costs associated with running those those agencies. And when the shutdown occurred, we couldn't hold events at the country club. The grill room was shut down at the, and golf was shut down for a period of time. Fortunately, that was opened up more quickly than the other areas. But it still had a significant negative impact. The same thing happened with Parks and Recreation. A lot of, two-thirds of the revenue in the Parks and Recreation Fund comes from programs. I know we levy a tax. And that tax, if you look at the budget closely, you will see that that tax funds all of the parks' maintenance costs. But it doesn't pay for programs, and it doesn't pay for some some of the salaries. It pays for a portion of them, the, basically the overhead salaries. But participant recreation salaries, contracted services for teachers and and the like for programs are all paid for by the program revenues that Parks and Recreation charges for their services. And that's why you see that significant drop. Absent COVID, I think we would be about where we need to be. So I thought those were two interesting charts to share with you. I'm going to end with a quote from Thomas Jefferson that says, "A perfect republic can materialize only in a small jurisdiction such as a township. They have proved themselves the wisest inventor ever devised on the wit of man for the perfect exercise of self-government and for its preservation." And this is really a big shout-out to local government. We are the government closest to the people, and we provide a significant service to our residents. We hope to do so for a long period of time. And with that, and I said it would be crisp, I'll ask for any questions or comments. Anything you want to go back to, I can go back to. Or if you want to get into any details of the of the specific budgets, you all have copies. I'll be happy to address those questions.
The the budget will be available for review. I'll tell you, before we get into discussion, I'll entertain a motion. And then we can get into some additional board discussion and questions if so desired. Kim?
Yes, the boards are required by the second-class township code to adopt a preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of twenty days. The budget may be adopted anytime after the twenty-day period, but must be adopted by December thirty-first. The board may take whatever changes it needs to prove to the preliminary budget prior to its adoption. We also can make changes to the adopted preliminary budget prior to the final. We also um can make changes to the adopted preliminary budget prior to the final adoption scheduled for the December sixteenth, twenty twenty meeting within the limits established by the Second Class Township Code. Now, this code states that line items may not be changed more than twenty-five percent and the total budget may not be changed by more than ten percent. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Thanks, sure.
I move to adopt the twenty twenty one preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of not less than twenty days as required by the Second Class Township Code.
No motions, there are second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, open for discussion. Kim, anything further you'd like to add?
Well, first of all, I just want to say that um our administration has done a great job with this budget. You know, this has been a really rough year with COVID and it has really affected our township in so many ways. Um, and uh, Bob Armelin, you did a wonderful job punching the numbers. Bob, your leadership was unbelievable. Um, we've gotten, you know, we're keeping our township safe. And um, and that's the most important thing is keeping our township safe. But the best part too is especially this year while we have a lot of residents suffering with um all the problems associated with COVID, um, uh, that we're not having a tax increase this year. Um, I think that's, you know, our, our township is a lean, lean running machine and they have just pulled in their belts and gotten, um, you know, just done a great job. I mean, the fact is that all our, all the parts of our township do a great job from police and fire and library and senior center and Parks and Rec and, and, and Parks and Rec usually does so great and COVID has just affected them so much. Our services are so phenomenal to all our, our residents. Um, our, our public works, I mean, I have people come up to me to say that when they get into North Hampton, they know because our roads are plowed better than anybody else's. So I, I just think that our services are phenomenal. And the fact that we're not raising taxes this year, I'm not saying that next year we'll, we'll deal with what we have to. But this has been a great year that we, we survived, we've survived so far with the COVID and we're not doing a tax increase. So I just want to say thank you to all the administration, all our departments, all our employees, just thank you for doing a great job and stepping up when we really needed you to.
Thank, thanks, Kim. Barry?
I, I actually, I think Kim actually summarized everybody's thoughts pretty well. So um, well done, Kim. And um, yeah, I'm very proud of the administration and the job, job they do. And I thought Kim did a real nice job summarizing. So no, all agreement.
Thanks, Barry. Eileen?
It's all been said. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Frank?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Nothing. Thanks. Uh, yeah, I, I echo um what everybody else said. Um, you know, I, I have some notes. I think it's a solid plan with no tax increase, no reduction in services. And what I really like is uh, Bob, how you really hit on taking full advantage of grant opportunities. You know, we really need to use these grants to help us um pay for some of the things that we do. And I forget who said this to me early on, but you know, the grant money is out there. It may as well be spent in North Hampton. So I think that's great and it's great that you do that. Uh, Bob Armelin, great job hitting out of the park as always, putting this package together. Thank you so much. You know, we've weathered a, a global pandemic. Um, and global pandemics have local implications, you know, and we weren't immune to that. Um, and, and we're doing a great job of managing it and you can see that it does pinch us at times. Um, but I think we will get through it. You know, it might take a year or two to get out of this. Um, but we will weather it together. There's no question about that. Uh, I just wanted to comment also about the, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't comment about the, the, the presentation on the fire service. Uh, I think North Hampton Township, we have our arms around this issue. Um, this is an issue that plagues the entire country in, in reduction of volunteers in the fire service and North Hampton's not immune. But I want to offer that we still have one hundred percent protection right now. We're in a good place. But we know where it's going. We, we, we watch the trends. We know where it's going. And this is the kind of thing that you can't just turn around in a day. You know, we really have to plan for what this future is going to be. And I think, Bob, you did a great job of outlining kind of where we are and where we need to go. Um, and yes, the future of the fire service here will look different than it does today, than it did ten years ago, that it did fifty years before that. But the bottom line is that the residents of, and the visitors of North Hampton Township can count on their fire department now and in the future. So thanks for that.
Adam, can I say one other thing, please?
Sure, please.
I have just two comments. I, I'm going into my forty-third year in local government. This is the, this is the most amazing team of employees I've ever worked with. We have the best of the best. I, I thought they ought to know that. Um, I know Bob has been talking about retirement. If he does, that would be a big loss. But I know, you know, he has a, he has his, uh, his eyes on a different goal at, at some point. Um, and I know that I, I, I talked a little bit about the fund balance and I, I wanted to say this. Um, even though our fund balance is low, we've been there before. In two thousand and nine, I think it was, we actually had a negative fund balance in the general fund. One hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think, is the number uh from memory. So my point is, we have been there before. We will manage out of this as we have done in the past.
Thanks, Bob. I think that's a, that's a great comment about the staff. I mean, I know, I've known many of you for many, many years and it is a phenomenal staff and that also comes back to you as well. So you should, you should know that. And you, you and Bill and Bob have proven to be fantastic stewards of our funds. You know, and, and we can see that. We can see that. So thank you. Uh, if there's no other comments, I'll uh ask for a vote. All in favor of adopting preliminary budget indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob, for that great presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, I will just announce again, if anybody would like to make public comment at the end of the meeting, uh, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. Put your name and address in the body of the email so that you can be recognized. You don't have to put anything in the subject because that is uh open subject time. At this point, I'd like to uh move over to liaison reports. Kim?
Okay, first I'd like to talk about the Senior Center. The staff at the Senior Center would like to help make the holidays a little fester for everyone. Uh, they're holding a holiday wreath fundraiser. Orders for beautiful fresh twelve inch uh evergreen wreaths are now being taken. The wreaths are only twelve dollars each. What a bargain. A bright red bow is included or you can choose to decorate it with whatever you wish. Um, orders must be received at the Senior Center no later than Monday, November thirtieth. You can place your order a few different ways. The order form is available on the township website under the Senior Center link, or you can call the Senior Center directly at two one five three five seven eight one nine nine. Now, this is the good part. You can get two options for curbside pickup at the center. You won't even need to get out of your car. The wreaths will be placed directly in the trunk of your car for you. Um, the wreath pickup times are Thursday, December third from eleven to two, or Monday, December seventh from five to eight. Um, order one, order a bunch. Um, and I think it's a great way for us to help support our Senior Center. Um, now Parks and Rec. Typically, this time of year, I would be making announcements about a holiday trip to New York um or for camp, but with everything with COVID, that's all been shut down. But I do want to say that the, um, our, our staff and our, our, the staff at Park and Rec has did a great job with Halloween. Um, the event was held outside at the municipal park last month. The awesome costume parade decorated trunks, candy shoot, scarecrow row were complemented with the perfect Halloween weather. Everything fell into place and all the staff and volunteers deserve a tremendous thank you and a job well done. I also want to say that Adam Salziger and Eileen Silver looked wonderful in their costumes. And we had a great time. Um, the December holidays are right around the corner. And again, our Parks and Rec Special Events Coordinator, Betty Satterman, has been busy planning some new events so that our residents will have the opportunity to celebrate. Book and Bedtime, one of our most popular events, is unable to take place in person this year. But Betty has found a way to make it happen. Mrs. Claus has already made a recording of favorite bedtime stories. The elves are busy making packages for the book and bedtime event, which include the viewing code for the recording and interactive accessories to follow along with the video. A holiday craft, hot chocolate, and a treat for bedtime. Jingle bells, reindeer food, and a personalized message for your children from Santa. Instructions for contactless package pickup will be sent upon registration. Access code to the video will be available for viewing through December eighth through December eighteen. Please, if you're interested, register now so that the elves know how many packages to make. Um, uh, for fun for the entire family is planned outside the municipal park starting December eighth. Take a stroll along the paths of the municipal park and enjoy the sights and sounds of the holiday season. Sing and carol along with recordings from the Bucks County Women's Chorus at different stations along the walkway, starting at the amphitheater. With the push of a button, you can enjoy the melodies and holiday favorites. Continue on the pathway to delight in the festive decorations presented by the Council Rock School um staff Girl Scout Council. The Trail of Cheer will be available for viewing starting December eighth through December eighteen, weather permitting. Um, and in addition, Parks and Rec has a direct hotline to the elves, Mrs. Claus, and Santa. Beginning December eighth, there will be a different message each week that will keep you up to date on what's going on at the North Pole leading up to Santa's big trip with reindeer. Uh, the hotline can be called anytime beginning December eighth through Thursday, December twenty-fourth. And you can find the hotline number in the brochure and online at www.northhamptonrec.com. Uh, lastly, uh, the new um, the new program, uh, brochure will be out after Thanksgiving. You can find tons of programs virtually and in person. So please support our North Hampton Rec. And I just want to say, I hope everyone has a very safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Kim. Frank?
Yeah, the Township Library has extended their hours. It's on the website. But basically, Monday to Thursday, the access is from ten AM to seven PM with senior hours still between ten AM and twelve PM. Friday, it's open from one to five PM, Saturday from ten AM to five PM. Curbside pickup is still available uh for, you know, for all the hours that the library is open. That's kind of the good news, but I guess I have to give it a bad news as well. The library closed early today because of lack of heat. Uh, if you plan to go tomorrow, call or check online to see if the problem has been solved. Yeah, you know, what's good to have more hours available at the library, these extended hours are also subject to change if we get different guidance from the governor's office. Current guidance requires the proper wearing of a mask when using township facilities. Proper wearing means both your mouth and nose are covered. Uh, other issue with the library, I have another page here, I think. There it is. Just want to remind everybody that Gift Giving Tuesday is December first this year and the library is on the list. Please consider giving a gift to the library. It will certainly help us this year. The Veterans Advisory Commission. The Veterans Advisory Commission held its celebration for Veterans Day with no audience in attendance. A video of the presentation is available on the township website. Unfortunately, due to technical problems with the equipment, it is not on the cable channel. I want to thank all the members of the Veterans Advisory Commission for the work on the program. And a special thanks to our video sponsors, John and Bernadette Heenan. The Municipal Authority. The only thing I will say about the Municipal Authority is that there is no increase in water rates or, or sewer rates for their twenty twenty-one budget. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank. And you're humble. I'll just make a quick call out. You did a really nice job with that uh veterans video as well. It's a great video. It's, it's a, it was a nice ceremony. Thank you. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. So I just had a few items. The Planning Commission uh November meeting actually was canceled. The next meeting is scheduled for December eighth, Tuesday night. Uh, the giant land development application is going to be heard that night. That's a giant application for downtown Richborough. So that'll be, once again, it's December eighth. Uh, we've gotten a lot of uh feedback from people regarding Wawan Holland. Um, the township is still waiting uh planning divisions for that. So there's no meeting scheduled for that at all. And the only thing I'll mention is that the Springwell Country Club is um, the construction of those townhouses is moving along very well. And we also have had a lot of dirt move on the Waverly subdivision. I think that'll be starting probably early spring with new housing there. But that's all I have to report.
Thanks, Barry. Eileen?
Nothing, just to wish everyone a safe Thanksgiving. And I know it's going to be different for most of us this year, but we still have to think about all the wonderful things we have to be thankful for.
That's true. Thanks, Eileen. Uh, just a couple of quick things for me. Um, first, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't say uh there has to be a fire safety message for Thanksgiving. There's going to be a lot of people cooking. Make sure your oven is ready for your turkey. Make sure it's nice and clean. Uh, a lot of people use their oven for storage and uh make sure you look inside before you preheat it. You never know. Uh, we get, we get our fair share of calls for that. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I, I saw a, a message and I thought it was, it was pretty cool. And it said, "This year, give thanks, not COVID." So have small gatherings, be with people you know, wear your mask. And um, we'll, we'll hopefully next year be able to go back to, to big celebrations. It's a small price to pay to make, keep everybody healthy. So thanks for that. Next is manager's report. Uh, Bob, anything else to add tonight?
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay.
I think I've said enough.
Thank you. Mr. Paizo, Solicitor's Report.
Yes, thank you. Um, I should report that the board met in executive session this evening immediately prior to uh the regular uh business meeting. Uh, present for the executive session, which of course was uh virtual in the same fashion as uh, as this uh supervisor's meeting is. Uh, present for that meeting were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, the Township Assistant Manager, the Township Engineer, and me. Um, two matters of pending litigation were discussed. No official action was taken in regard to either of those matters and no official action was required this evening as a result of that executive session. Uh, happy Thanksgiving to all of you and to everyone in the community.
Same to you, Joe. Thank you. Uh, Engineers' Report. Amanda?
Uh, no report, only to wish everyone a safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thanks very much, Amanda. Same to you. Okay, we do have uh someone for public comment and I'll ask Bill if you could uh turn on Joe Johnston's microphone? Are you with us, Joe? Think you're on mute? Still on mute. There you go.
Can you hear me?
I can. If you can, just uh your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Joe Johnston, forty-one Grant Drive in Holland. Uh, I want to talk about the budget. Uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, the manager at the beginning of the presentation, he had the appropriations chart up. And uh, I wondered, I would like uh, if you could go around the horn there and just point out, you know, which departments were in the black and who finished in the red. And I don't want to single out any uh one department, but uh, the manager did mention that the uh Country Club Golf Course and the Parks and Rec uh were most impacted financially by the uh COVID virus. And uh, I'd also, so I'd like to know um what their year-end uh, uh fund balances were or, or uh, how much uh they had to dip into the general fund to make themselves whole uh for those two. or, or how much they had to dip into the general fund to make themselves whole for those two items. And I would have one additional question after that. It'd be separate.
Okay, Joe, and I'll tell you what we'll do. If, if, if Mr. Pellegrino has the answer handy, he's, he's welcome to answer it. If he doesn't, then we'll just have to get back to you after the meeting. I'll turn it to you, Bob.
Okay, the, the, the Park and Rec Department, their fund is supposed to be, is projected to be $76,000 in the red. The Country Club is $749,000 in the red. That's primarily due to the governor shutting down our banquet operations because golf was shut down for about six, I think, six or eight weeks. And once that opened up, our, our T-sheets were filled. Just for point of clarification, the general fund doesn't make up any of that deficit. These are separate operating funds relying on their own, in Park and Rec's case, their own tax, tax, tax levy. And in the Country Club on their, on the revenue from bank puts in golf. So the general fund has no, there's no impact on the general fund for, for these two operations. And that is true of every other operating fund in our budget. We have 18 funds. Let's see, there's three, six, nine, 11 operating funds. The general fund stands on its own. The others all stand on their own, too. And what was your other question, Joe?
So then I guess my final, thank you for, for that response. And my final question would be, you know, if you go online, the chat rooms, you hear a lot of talk back and forth. Can, can, for the record, can you tell us, you know, what is the township, the total township debt? You know, our, you know, our bonds and stuff like that. And what is the anticipated date that it will be paid off, made whole?
Yeah, I'll give the same. If, if Bob can't answer the question, that's fine. Okay.
I can answer that question. Let's see. Just give me a second here. Our total debt at the, on December 31st of this year is $37 million. And I believe the last debt payment is in 2043. We have, we have some bonds being paid off in 2043 where we refunded the bonds. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No, no, thank you. That's it. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Same to you, Joe, and your family as well. I don't think there were any other comments. Let me just give a nice check. Bill, anything else? Have you said? I don't have, no other public comment at this time. Let me just double check myself. Okay, there's no other comments. So at this point, the meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye.
Take care.